There we go.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the Zephyr Hills City Council meeting. It's Monday, April 8th, 2024. It's 6:10 PM. May I have Droll call, please?
Yes, sir. Lance Smith.
Here.
Ken Burgess. Melody Monson.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson. Charles Proctor.
Here.
Steve Spina.
Here.
Matthew Maggert. William Poe.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, can everybody stand for the invocation by Kendall DeFord? He's the pastor at the First Church of the Nazarene. Then we'll follow it with a pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we worship you. We thank you for everything you do for us, for loving us. Help us to find better ways to love you back and to love those around us in our communities, in our neighborhoods. I pray that you would bless this evening, that decisions that are made would be biblical, they would be with your guidance. I thank you for the privilege of living and working in a community like this. That's one of the blessings that we have. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor DeFord. All right, I want to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. I just ask you to silence your phones so they don't go off during the meeting. If you want to speak to something, you'll come right up here to our clerk, Kevin Weiss, over here. And just ask to speak. No, Lori's back here. She's right there. She's in the gold. And if you want to speak tonight, come to the podium at the time or just sign up to speak with Kevin or Lori, either one. All right, with that, I'm going to go to the mayors. What you got for us tonight, Mayor?
I think Kevin's working on it.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. All right, so let me see if I can pull it over here. Okay, so one thing we've been working on collectively has been online reservations for Alice Hall, Train Depot, Wixstrom Stage. So residents don't necessarily have to come in to City Hall between the hours of 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. They can more or less reserve those facilities at any time of day from their home, wherever they have a Wi-Fi connection, essentially. So we pretty much have all the bones in order to get that going and the payment, the GL code, and a lot of stuff that Jessica knows about that she's very helpful with. But so I'll just kind of walk through sort of a brief step-by-step of how this can be utilized, and if y'all have any questions, just let me know. So this would be housed on our city website when we're ready to do a soft launch, but people would go and there's a welcome page that explains how to register, create a password, include some pertinent information as far as address, phone number, other members of the household, and so on. So I won't go through all that, but that information will be able to be found there at all times. And then we have another catalog tab here, Facility Rentals and Reservations. And right now, we have three. We have Alice Hall, Train Depot, and Wixstrom Stage. So if I click Alice Hall, for example, this provides a little bit of background information about the community center and so forth, who it's named after and all that. And then if you scroll down, there's information about reservations, rates, what's provided, and there's also some images of various layouts. So right now, we have four layouts. We have an event-style layout. We have another event-style layout, which is a little bit larger than Layout A. We have Layout B, Layout C, which is a classroom style, and then Layout D, a meeting style. So if I wanted to make a reservation, I just scroll down and click on which day I would like to make that reservation. And right now, if you notice, there's green and kind of orange-yellow. Orange-yellow means that there is already a reservation on that day, and green means it's completely wide open. So if I click on orange, for example, April 11th, it looks like I could rent the building between 3:00 to 9:00 PM. So my understanding is Alice Hall is kind of tied up between 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, or whenever that buffer time is. But if I go to a green date, we have 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so I could rent it any time of day. So once a reservation is made, the system connects to the point where you can't double-book that reservation, if that makes sense. So I hope I didn't, I don't think I added anything to the cart. Let me just double-check. Okay. So if I wanted to-
Would that-
They can airline see.
Kevin, can they, they can say, like, I wanted to rent it from 9:00 to 12:00, something like that?
Correct, yeah. So I, and I'll just kind of do a test. I actually think I have my P-card in here, so I should be able to actually go through the entire process. So, and I'm glad you brought that up. So there's certain rules within Alice Hall that, and the Train Depot, you can't rent it for just one hour. So, for example, if I'm trying to rent it from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, it's not going to let me during the week. I've got to rent it for at least two hours, so. Yes. Let me go back here. Sorry, I accidentally clicked too many buttons. So if I try that, so it does not, but I think there is an explanation up here, but that's something we could include. So like in the rates, minimum of two hours required for rentals, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
That's a good idea, to put that in that warning that pops up.
Except there might be multiple days.
And also, Kevin, so this blocked out is orange and green, so right now, if somebody goes on there and they realize that, oh, orange means somebody booked, but they may only need it for a couple hours, is there somewhere we'll let them know that just because it's orange doesn't mean it's completely booked out, in other words?
Yeah, well, we would have to talk to Civic Rec or Civic Plus about that, but I'm sure that's something that we can house or include as part of that verbiage.
Just make sure that they understand that just because it's orange doesn't mean there might not be a block of time they can use it.
Maybe there's a third color code, so maybe red. So if the whole day is booked, it'd be red, and then you have yellow, and then you have green.
Yeah.
So there's a 12-hour buffer, so it's not possible to rent twice a day?
Ah.
Okay. I'm sorry on that. I'm still getting used to all the rules and regulations of the rentals, but so that's something that we'll have to program in there or get situated, but. Okay. I got you, I got you. Okay.
But if somebody wanted to rent Alice Hall from 8:00 to 12:00, and then again, from 4:00 to whenever we let them go till 8:00 or 10:00, I mean, it should be available, I would think.
Well, our Parks and Rec Department has informed us that ain't happening.
The issue, the issue is, is if you have a rental that comes in in the morning, there's no guarantee how they leave the facility, they damage something, and then we're calling to cancel that afternoon. Ideally, yes, if, you know, we have a two-hour window, the crews go in and clean it, the problem is, is if they come in and some of the rules that we, some of the rules are in place because they came in to clean it, should have been a 30-minute cleanup, and the guy was there four hours. And so that's part of the issue, what we're working, trying to work through as well on the, you know, not having two in a day or multiple in a day. So just so I'm understanding, there's only one rental allowed a day. Okay, so we can program that in to make sure that's correct.
Just say it's booked.
Yeah.
Off the table.
But as we go through the process, so say I want to rent for Monday, April 15th, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So we have rental of the Train Depot, the entire building, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. $20 an hour brings you to $40 total, plus a $250 refundable deposit. Then I check out. And then this is where we have a couple prompts, and there's still maybe some tweaking. We just kind of wanted to put it out there in front and see if any changes need to be made, and we can always make alterations down the road as well. But first question is, please select the desired table and chair layout for your event at the Zephyr Hills Train Depot. Let's say I want to go with the Layout A event style. Is your organization a government entity or civic organization? Say no. What is the name of your organization? And then you could plug it in as such. You submit the response, and then this brings up the entire rental agreement. You would agree to that agreement, sign that agreement? And then you would confirm the attached waiver, submit your payment, and then you would get a receipt. I could actually go ahead and, I could and then void it if you want, but it goes through the process there. I believe that's the sales tax, correct?
Seven percent.
Seven percent? Then we can go in and change that. Or is it, is maybe rental sales different than?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
You're right. Commercial rental is only five and a half.
Yeah, so that's, let me see if I can go back here. And I'll just show another example for sake here. Wixstrom Stage, so it's free to rent, but you can identify if you want electricity as well. So same thing, we have, we'll have to get back on some language about how it can't be used multiple times in one day, but just for example's sake, I'll pick Thursday, April 11th, from, let's try 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. And I should, I kind of skidded past this, but you can also view some images as well that we put up there, and we can always change them and swap them out.
Can I tell these pictures?
Thanks. I did, and one of our volunteers as well, so. Thank you, we appreciate it. So 12:00 to 3:00, add to cart, and actually, I'm going to X out of this Train Depot because I don't want to pay for that. Check out. Do you need electric turned on at the Wixstrom Stage? Yes. And we might not even need to include this timeframe because, well, maybe we do if people only need the electricity turned on for an hour of their three-hour event, whatever it may be. I'll just say yes, all 3:00. And I'll submit the response. We have a hold harmless agreement that you would need to sign to move forward, confirm the waiver agreement, and actually, I can go ahead and accept this, and I should get an email on behalf of that. And this is what you would get as well. So this just shows you the receipt, and you can, if you're a user, you can print, email it, whatever it may be, and if people have questions, they can always reach out to our office with that. And then the other thing about this program is we will be able to house our summer youth recreation program registration on here. I still have to speak with Norm to get all the particulars in line, but people will be able to create an account and register directly online from here, and we'll have all the information of the registrants and get everything in order as well. And who knows, down the line, if the city has a full-fledged recreation department, we can always add more programs and services and rentals and whatever it may be there. So, but we figured we would start with the biggies of Alice Hall and the Train Depot because, you know, if anybody that works in City Hall knows that Lori and Jessica and whoever have designated a lot of time when somebody comes in to rent a facility, so just being able to do it, it's really for the convenience of the citizens and saving on man-hours for the staff as well. And Pasco County utilizes this. More and more city and county governments have this program. In fact, I play an adult softball league in Pasco County, and instead of having to go to Land O' Lakes to sign up a team, I did it from my couch or my bed or wherever I wanted to and registered and paid just like that, and if I had any questions, I could, I could reach out to the designated number or contact that was there. And then what they also did is they included this banner for us to kind of spruce it up a little bit with our branding and then links to our social media as well. And actually, there's a neat little feature that after somebody registers, they can share it on social media that, hey, I registered with the Train Depot, or I registered with, I registered an event with Alice Hall Community Center, whatever it is. So there's kind of that way to continue that interaction. But we hope to do a slow rollout, maybe this month, if possible, once we get some of the other tweaking in line, and we'll just help people along with the process because the idea is to eventually go all online with this, but we'll, we'll help and work with people through that, so.
I have a couple questions.
Go ahead.
So what happens if it's a civic organization or a place that we don't charge them? Is there going to be a way for them to?
Yeah, so that's something we're kind of trying to figure out and fine-tune, but there is, and I sort of glossed over it, but I'll just go, let me, let me go back to Alice Hall, for example. So I go through the process, let me select. They don't have to pay? Yeah, they don't have to pay, basically.
But I mean, will it let them reserve it?
Yes.
Without having to pay?
Yeah, you will have to put down a refundable deposit, though. And I'll just show you real, real quickly here. So add to cart. And this is where you'll see, is your organization a government entity or civic organization? And I would say, let me, in order to go through the process, I'll just select a layout. Yes, and then, so Rotary Club, Zephyr Hills. Then we submit. On the agreement. And then you'll, you'll see the government civic entity is credited for the rental of that building, and it's higher because it's a weekend price.
Okay.
But you still have to pay the refundable deposit, which can be returned if the building is in fair condition.
So does that-
Good condition, yeah.
Does that go right back on someone's credit card? Do you know how the refundable process works?
Yeah, so, and I would have to double-check with Jessica, but more or less a click of the button and it can, it can be sent back instead of having to come in and get a check or refunded through credit card, whatever it is, so.
Do they, when they come in, if they're a nonprofit or something like that, do they provide some type of proof that they're a nonprofit to Lori?
That would be a question for Lori, because that might be something, okay, that might be something that we have to include.
So we might have to add that, that they would scan and send whatever document they need.
Yeah. Because the thing that I was thinking about with this is, well, anybody could make up that they're a civic organization and get out of having to pay. So that's something that we'll have to more or less go back to the drawing board and figure out if you have to upload it or some way that we can verify that you're a government or civic entity, so. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, no, it shouldn't be that hard.
And like something we were talking about today, I was speaking with Billy, actually, is some people may not, if it's their first time renting the facility, they might not know that they have to go to the police department to pick up the keys. So we, we kind of want to highlight and bold that in the receipt that they get, that, okay, half an hour before the event, you need to make sure you go to the police department to pick them up, and you also have to return them, I think it's within an hour of the event finishing, something like that. So we, we want to highlight some of those more important things as opposed to having somebody call at an odd time, or they don't really know what they're doing, per se. So that's kind of a lay of the land of what we eventually plan to go to and add to our website, and like I said, we'll, we'll help walk people through this process. I mean, I'm still learning new things every day with this, and we kind of just want to, at some point, put it out there, see how it goes, and I'm sure we'll get feedback, things that we don't even think about, that, hey, why don't you include this, or have you thought about this, that we can, we can add or, or put in there as well. And then the other thing, any other questions on Civic Rec, the online reservation and recreation portal? Okay. The other thing kind of tied into technology here that I just want to credit the, the planning department and Tommy Lee. And let me just minimize here. So one thing, sorry, give me one second. There we go. So mapping and GIS, we now have the ability and capability to view all of that online. You can also click and download a PDF, but all those maps should now be updated, and I'll just show an example here. So if we go to the CRA page, and then we go to CRA District Map, this will redirect to the ArcGIS site, and you can see the Zephyr Hills CRA area, and I'm just going to change the transparency. So you can kind of scroll through and look at what is and what is not in the CRA district, which I think is very helpful for realtors when it comes to grant opportunities and everything. And then tied into that, I'll just go back.
We talked about that aspect at the meeting Gail had with the realtors.
Yeah.
On how to easily identify who was in and who was out.
Right, so now they should essentially be able to scroll through and find that, okay, this, this street or avenue, I'm good to go in that regard. And we're still, let me see if I can, let me go back to the main page here. I need to, I need to change some of these links around. Bear with me here. Okay. And something, we might find out down the line that the, the mapping and the zoning is so popular that we want to create a hot button right here so people can click on it directly. As of this moment, we've just, we put it on the planning page. You kind of have to go through a couple clicks to get to that point, but maps and demographics. So if you go to this link, it'll take you to various galleries, so you can look at the form-based code, for example. You can look at the CRA, the historic district, all the zoning, and I'll just click on one or two of these just to showcase them. So like, here's the form-based code, and it's got some of the designations here with the districts. And then I'll show. I'll show the 2024 zoning. So you can see all the, and frankly, some of this I don't understand, but it's there if somebody wants to look at it and, and peruse it.
Understand it.
And find some information out. Yeah, yeah, just call Todd, he'll, yeah.
Take an hour.
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, so I just wanted to update on that. Again, Tommy Lee was extremely helpful with providing these links, and she also created these PDFs as well. So if somebody wants to download them and take a closer look at them, because some of these were, you know, they weren't updated since 2018, 2019. I think they even had the old logo on them as well, but I think all of them should be now in line and as up-to-date as possible as of, as of February, March, April of 2024. So, but again, we may, we may find out, I would maybe have to do some research of other sites, but we could pretty easily create another hot button that goes automatically to those zonings and maps pages, so.
That'd be good.
Yep, but that's all I have. Sorry, it took a little bit more, longer than expected, so.
Any questions for Kevin?
Hey, thank you, and there's capabilities we don't know. Thank you for looking at it, and I think getting online, I don't think it's going to bother Lori for them to be able to go ahead and book it online, is it, Lori? No, she says okay, good. It'll be, there'll be a transition, there'll be a bunch of issues, but once you get it finished, it'll be much better.
Right, and honestly, people are more technologically savvy than we give them credit for. I mean, my mom's on TikTok, so it's kind of, you know, it's crazy what you see out there. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. All right. That was the only thing you had, wasn't it, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, we have some consent agenda items. There are six of them. Does anyone care to pull any of them?
Make a motion, we pass all six.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval of all six consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 3.1, text amendment to turning lane standards. Matt? All right, and I think this is probably the third time we've had this on the agenda. It's regarding the hot spots. My fourth time, probably, it could be, could be. Does anybody have any questions on this item before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing right now. Does anyone sign to speak to this item?
No, sir.
Does anyone care to speak to this item? Seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing on this item. Counsel?
We approve ordinance 1474-24 on its second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of this item. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And again, this isn't, we're going above and beyond the traffic standards for development, so, okay. All right, city manager's report.
Just as a quick one, our second meeting in May, May 27th, actually falls on Memorial Day, so the request is to cancel that meeting. Obviously, council can decide to choose a different day if you, if you so choose, but staff's recommendation is to cancel the May 27th, 2024 meeting because it does fall on Memorial Day, and should there be an emergency item, we can schedule something later in that week.
I move that we approve the city manager's-
Second. I have a motion for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, city attorneys' report.
I'll, I'll take this one.
Okay.
All right. So Pasco County has asked that we agree to provide assistance by way of staff, vehicles, equipment, facilities during a declared state of emergency or federal disaster declaration. Declaration. Assistance will only be provided to Pasco County if the requests of services are available. So if we can provide services, we'll provide services and help Pasco County. Fortunately for us on this side, storms hit Pasco County, there's some flooding, things like that, and, and we're fully operational. So what the agreement says is that we'll go help Pasco County if we have the resources, and any cost will be reimbursed 100% from Pasco back to Zephyr Hills based on the FEMA eligible expenses. With that, staff recommends approval of the inter-local agreement with Pasco County for disaster response and recover, recovery-related services.
Question on this? And I just think that's been a good neighbor's, what that's been, so.
And it's reciprocal, really, isn't it, or?
It is.
Or do we need to get something reciprocal?
I, I think we're part of the emergency management, there's a, and I don't do this, Shane and John can go in there and put in requests, and not only is it Pasco County, but it's the state of Florida, and they'll, they'll call in for backup services. I'll tell you, two storms ago, I think, we sent a generator to Auburndale. Yeah, come on. So, you know, kind of-
We're very appreciative, too. They talked to us about it at the League of Cities Conference.
Yeah, sure did.
Yeah, so I mean, I think these agreements we have, but we don't necessarily need them because we agree, but as Matt tells me, we have these agreements for when the agreement doesn't go smoothly.
Right, right. John, John, you have something to add, I know.
I do, yes, I do. John Bosick, utility director for the city. Question I have is actually for Matt.
actually for Matt. We already, utilities already has mutual aid agreement through the Floworn system, statewide, where people go in, they request resources from, if you have a problem, you request whatever resource you need.
Right.
And mutual aid from whoever signed up.
Right.
Comes to the city. I don't know if that's going to have any effect on that in regards to reimbursements, because they have their own reimbursement process in there. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. It's been a while since I've looked at the agreement. I just want to make sure it doesn't, we don't have, get affected. No, I understand that, but I didn't see any designation that it was separate, or thought it was all encompassing. So.
It was reimbursement rates?
Well, that's just part of it. There's a lot of other things in the agreement.
But is that, is that addressed in this agreement or not?
This agreement is 100% based on FEMA eligible expenses. But I don't know with the other agreement that preceded this, that we've had in place for over 10 years.
But the impact of this would be on that?
Correct.
Is what you're asking?
Correct.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I'm just thinking logically that it'd probably, whoever asks first, that's who we're going to respond to, I guess. I don't, I don't.
I can send him the agreement tomorrow morning, the mutual aid agreement that we have with Floworn.
Yeah, let's do that. Because we should have already had this discussion.
I guess just to pull this, or table this thing? Is time sensitive?
Yes, yes.
This, this, this agreement here?
Well, during the department, I made an assumption that this was going to be for Public Works.
Why is this time sensitive?
It should have been done before, we thought we brought it before council and Pasco County questioned where it was. And so we should have had it done back in August. And we didn't. Thankfully, there were no storms. Regardless of this being approved or not approved, again, back to my original statement, if they call us and ask us for help, we give, we, we have it, we give it to them, and they reimburse us per cost, and it's vice versa. This just formalizes the agreement. This is part of their county emergency management plan, the SINT plan. So it's to formalize it now.
To formalize it.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be that big of an issue. I just want to make sure that it's not, I'm not saying not to approve it, that's all.
Overlapping services or whatever, yeah.
Why don't we go? Why don't, I don't, we could go ahead and approve it contingent on it not having any issues with.
Please speak to what he's talking about, because I've not seen what he's talking about.
Do you want us to approve it contingent on review of the other agreement? Okay, that's fine. So do I have a motion to table this item?
Motion to table this item?
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to table this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Where am I at? Oh, there it is. All right, we're down to the citizen comments. Has anyone signed to speak?
No, sir.
Does anyone, does anyone care? Oh, I saw that hand go up fast. All right. Come, just all right, come on up and just your.
4241 Skydive, Skydive City Manager. I just wanted to take some time to come and address you guys, give you a little recap of our march. I haven't been here. That is our busiest month of the year, and we had a very successful march. We had over 500 visitors come visit our Skydive Center throughout that, including but not limited to the Golden Knights, 20 naval cadets from Annapolis Naval Academy. We set a new world record for vertical formation at Skydive City with 32 people doing a sequential formation. And our flagship boogie event, as we call them, had over 250 participants. So the word is out that Kyle and Lauren have taken over. And we are moving forward in a direction with the sale that's positive. Susan is flying in tomorrow to sign some documents. I need something from Mr. Maggard to help close. That should be coming in the next month or so, or should be. But I just wanted to give you guys an update. And I have a very grand vision for Skydive City that is not entirely what it is right now. And I look forward to working with you guys on it. So thank you for your time.
Great. Kyle, thank you for coming out and updating us. I appreciate you coming.
Thanks.
Very good. That's right. We're still beaten, right? We still have a pulse. Okay. Mayor announcements.
I just had one question. We were coming up on some of the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did anybody else?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, did anybody else have any citizen comment? Sorry about that.
No.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, seeing none now, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll try to start over again. So we have, we come up on the time where we do some events at the cemetery and out at the Veterans Center and things like that. And when Mayor Whitfield was here, we were able to use his tents. He, we cannot use his tents anymore because he just doesn't have the staff to put them up and down. So my question is, how do we go about, as a city, being able to maybe get some branded tents that we can use at memorials, you know, when we're out at the, doing these events?
A ten by ten, Public Works tent.
Ten by ten's not big enough for.
How big you want?
Well, I'm thinking we need two probably, a 40 by 40 where, and then maybe a 20 by 20. So.
Oh, those are big tents.
Well, aren't those? Is that too big?
That's big.
Twenty by twenties, if you put them side by side, that's plenty. Thirty, thirty.
Twenty twenty, maybe. Get two.
Yeah, if you got two twenty by twenties.
So when you're out there, so here's the problem. You're out there, you guys have seen it. We invite all these people to come and speak, and they're sitting in this beating sun, both the speakers and the audience.
And you can't ever hear anything because the microphone doesn't work, which seems to be the theme.
Yeah. So whatever that looks like, I don't know what Mayor Whitfield's was. I know what a 20 by 20 looks like, because I have one at our office. But I think it needs to be a little bit bigger than that if you're going to put public underneath it. But I don't know this. But I'm just wondering how we go about, how I go about requesting that.
So an 800 square feet, so 20 by 20 is 400 square feet, and you have two of those side by side, that's about 800 square feet. So that could comfortably hold about 60 people.
Perfect.
And chairs kind of lined up that way. That's how we, that's a rule of thumb in architecture that we use space planning.
Yeah, I was right, 40 by 40. But 20 by 20, put it together. Okay.
Yeah, two 20 by 20s together would be manageable. I think it would cover most of the people who come to those events. And it would be something that, you know, Public Works could store easily.
Yes, yes.
Would take just a couple people to put up.
But then you'd have to also have another one where the speakers, you know, and 10.
A 10 by 10 probably would work for that.
10 by 10 may fit. It depends, yeah. So is that a possibility?
Anything's a possibility.
Anyways, I'd like to put a bug in someone's ear to maybe help me with that, because I know Memorial Day is coming up in six weeks.
Hey, you're right.
And, and we just, and we also want to be pushing those events for our residents to come out. Thank you.
Well, and just remember, a 20 by 20 won't make a 40 by 40, it'll be a 20 by 80.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, mine, you're right. It'd be 40 by 20.
40 by 40.
Yes.
It'd be 20 by 40.
Thank you.
Four, four 20 by 20s is 40 by 40.
Yeah, we don't need that much. Okay. Well, thank you.
It's all that math. Right? You still need it, right?
I still need it. You guys decide what we need. I just was hoping that we could get that done. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor. And maybe if we can't get it by then, maybe somebody, we can help Gene get, borrow the tent from Gene and put it up. I'm sure he would loan it to us, you know. So, but I think that's a great idea. All right. City manager announcements.
I have, I have three things. First, there's a career fair at Kirkland Ranch, Councilman Burgess made us aware of. So HR will be participating there. And then also, there'll be a career fair here at City Hall on the 19th from 11 to 1. We'll advertise that, hopefully get some people out. Also, there's been questions about projects, part of our budget software that we purchased. It's called Transparency Center. And I learned about this as I asked PIO to put together the list and some updates on our projects. So soon, we will have on our website, we currently, it's there now. There's little tabs within the budget that anybody who accesses the city website can go on and click on each project that is funded in the budget. So we're going to work on getting pictures, plans, and up to date, you can see up to date expenditures, but that will be brought back before council so that you can go on there anytime. But we'll do a whole demonstration. I'll do the demonstration. It'll go a little quicker on the projects. I won't let Todd or Kevin do those presentations. No, in all seriousness, we'll bring that back, show, you know, present it to council on how that works, how those tabs work. And then, you know, we can push that out to the, to the community as well. And then lastly, congratulations to Shane. He was named the Public Works Director of the Year by the APWA at his annual conference.
Great job, Shane.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy. All right, city attorney announcements? Okay, sure. Okay. All right, city council comments. Let's start down here with Councilman Spina.
Okay, yes, last week I had the opportunity and the pleasure of seeing Ronnie Mickelson, the former Chamber CEO. And she said to be sure to tell everybody hello. She said she keeps up with us on Facebook and the news, and she's excited about what we're doing. And she was amazed at how much we're growing. And she's doing well. And she plans on visiting, but not in the summer. So. And second is, last week I met with the city manager out at Cruzen Field, and I had given you, we had talked about it at the last meeting under my remarks. And there are several options out there that we could do with a pavilion. So we agreed to set, we're going to set up a meeting between what Billy and me, Shane, James, and then Damian Pickett and representative from Z-Pal, talk about what they want so we can get moving on it right away.
Good, great. That it? All right, thank you.
All I have is, you know, we have an election coming up tomorrow, so I hope you all go out and do your civic duty and vote for the candidate of your choice. That's all I got.
Very good, very good. Councilman Mickelson.
Thank you. Dr. Spina, I thank you for kind of bird dogging this whole parks improvements based on the money that we have in the budget for this fiscal year. I want to ask Mr. LeBlanc, though, have, do, do we have enough staffing manpower to execute those projects that we can do in-house? The other thing is that if we're going to do a pavilion, I'd appreciate if you guys would send me a picture. Now, it may not matter after tomorrow night, but I do have an opinion about, we should use similar materials or have a design that's similar to something that we've done in another park, and not go out there willy-nilly with our design ideas.
Yeah, no, they want to do something like they have at the skate park. It's a very simple design. It's a green roof and pole barn and a couple picnic tables.
Okay, good.
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. To answer your question on staffing, right now, Public Works, we're down about nine employees.
Wow.
So staffing with us right now is an issue, but some of these improvements we could definitely contract out.
That'd be a good idea.
And do as much in-house as we can. But out of 40 employees, we're down nine right now, which is why we're having the career fair and trying to recruit, recruit some good help. But.
I think outsourcing is not a bad option. I mean, if you have someone who can manage the project and you understand what the parameters are, and you just, falls in the threshold, it's under the budget, we just do it, get it done.
And City Manager Poe and I met today and talked about the pavilion at Cruzen, and we're going to look at some options and do what we can.
Thank you, Shane.
Just want to be sure you're covered. Thank you, sir. Nothing further. Thanks.
Okay.
Grants, congratulations again to Shane. And also, we, early we talked about the city yard and new buildings out there. And so it's 1984, that's 40 years old. Library's pretty new, city hall's new, that's the next place it needs to be. I think our employees that, you know, our retention out there, utility and public work, stuff like that's where we're having some of our biggest problems. I mean, we need to make a little investment in, in there and their work conditions, too. So I think that's a great thing we're going. I know we still got to talk a lot about the budget and all that, but I think it's the next step, next thing we should be doing. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. And I agree with you. I mean, I think it's long overdue out there. We've got great employees. They need a good place out there. So we definitely need to upgrade that out there, just mindful of the budget at all times. I had, oh, who, somebody brought us some nice food to eat, and I appreciate that. I don't know who did that, but that was nice. We had the meeting at 4 o'clock. Thank you to whoever did that.
Staff did.
Staff did? Billy, thank you, thank you.
Wasn't my idea. It was Karen, Karen.
Karen.
Well, that was a, very nice, very nice. All right. And Kevin, I appreciate you doing the online. And somebody had asked me just recently, because they were applying for a job, and they said that they had to fill out a PDF for a job. Are we not online yet with our application process for the city, or is it, I mean, it's not where you download a PDF and have to fill it out, though?
No, no. No, I believe you can, you can type it in and email it.
I thought it was.
We still accept hard copies.
Hard copy.
But they can send it in electronically as well.
I, I told.
I always recommend submit it, but also print it and bring it in as well, just to be safe.
Well, I'll let them know that it is available. I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure. And we had a, went to Todd's birthday party. He turned 60 last week. So it was a very nice party. We enjoyed ourselves. It was good. And, and I know, I said something about his staff a meeting or so ago, but I actually went with his staff when he took a bus ride. We rode on the public transport here in town, and it's very enlightening. And if you get a chance, just do it. You can catch a bus ride out here. It's like $3.50 to ride it. And I was really impressed with the cleanliness of the buses and the helpfulness of the drivers. They were very, very nice, very good. So, you know, and it's every 30 minutes. But, but if you didn't have a car, I mean, that's a nice, nice way to get around. And the staff he had was, they were all energetic men, and they were young. So it was, it was good. They, they were, they were good. I really appreciated it. And they're coming up with all kinds of ideas for transit stops, so covering them, which we need. So, and it was interesting, because we saw one guy get off on 301. He has his oxygen bottle. The next thing we know, he goes around behind the bus and crosses the four lanes of traffic with his oxygen bottle running across there. So I'm like, I don't know if we can do anything about that, but let's talk to DOT for a mid-block crossing, because it was between Daughtry Road and Island, and that's a long way to go up to an intersection. So, but anyway, it's eye-opening when you get on there and talk to the people. So I recommend it to anybody. But we do have an election tomorrow. Get out and vote. And this is my last meeting that I'll have to be president. So I've enjoyed it.
You did a good job.
Immensely. So thank you. And the meeting's adjourned.